To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roke?
Alderman Tobin?
Here.
Alderman Jean-François?
Here.
Alderman Johnson?
Here.
Alderwoman Ram Cassoun?
Here.
Alderman Kleiner?
Here.
Alderman Green?
Here.
Alderman Witt?
Here.
Alderman Massey?
Here.
President Rodriguez?
Here.
Approval minutes?
October 3rd, 2022.
So moved. Motion by Massey, second by Alderman Witt, all in favor?
Aye.
Correspondents?
We have a report from the Agriculture and Markets Department for their municipal shelter report from September 30th, 2022.
Received and filed.
We have a letter from Escobar Resources notifying us of a facility mailing list for the rear smelting and refining site. There was a change to a site plan for them.
Received and filed.
Town of Walk Hill Planning Board, application of 360 Route 211 LLC for a site plan and special use permit for a public hearing.
Forward to committee, planning committee.
And a notice from the Town of Walk Hill Planning Board for a public hearing for the Frito-Lay site plan and special use permit.
That's received and filed. That's it? That's it? Okay, for the good of the city, anyone who would like to address the council, please step forward. Remarks of the mayor? Anyone online?
Good evening. Begin with, I want to thank Mount Carmel Church and School for the donation of the beautiful Christmas tree that is brought into the city last Saturday, and thank all the vendors, Aspen Tree, Light Bright Sign, and others who participated and volunteered their time and their company's time to bring the tree in, along with the Middletown departments that assisted. It's a beautiful tree, we're very happy with it. This weekend, it will be decorated by the IBEW Union, and we'll, the following Friday, we will have the Christmas tree lighting and parade. So, we want to invite everyone out from the public to attend, and Maria Bruni will probably give you more details when she gives you the report. The only other matter I have to report tonight is a proclamation for Small Business Saturday, and I'll read the proclamation. The print's kind of small. Maria, you'll have to use a different font next time. Whereas the City of Middletown, New York celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 32.5 small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of the firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 62% of the net new jobs created since 1995, and small businesses employ 46.8% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas 79% of consumers understand the importance of supporting the small businesses and their community on Small Business Saturday, and 70% report the day that that day, sorry, makes them want to encourage others to shop small and independently owned business retailers, and 66% report that the day makes them want to shop small all year long. And whereas 58% of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business, and 54% reported they dined or ordered takeout from a small business restaurant, or bar or cafe on Small Business Saturday in 2021. And whereas the City of Middletown, New York supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities, and whereas advocacy groups as well as the public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, now therefore I, Joseph M. Di Stefano, Mayor of the City of Middletown, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 26th, November 26th, 2022, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the county to support our small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. So we'll be signing that and sending it on to the appropriate authorities that organize this, just to make sure that the City of Middletown does participate in it. I think that's all I have for tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them.
Any question for the mayor, Alderman Kleiner?
Do we have any update on the courthouse and what's going on?
The courthouse, I believe, is about 90%, Jacob?
Yeah, should be going out for bid shortly.
Yeah, yeah, the drawings were basically completed, the construction documents, and we'll be going out the bid shortly.
Very good, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Remarks of the department heads, economic development?
Good evening, everyone. As you can see, the holidays are in full swing with the arrival of tree, as the mayor mentioned, Our Lady of Mount Carmel School and Parish, their donation, and also Aspen Tree, Light Bright Signs, regional trucking, and I want to thank Jacob for DPW helping that day, Ross, Mastria, and the whole crew. Were there from step one, getting that tree to the square. Also Rayland, the Parks Department and Chief Huanchu for having the Middletown Police Department escort and do traffic control. And like the mayor mentioned, tree lighting next Friday, 6 o'clock, parade, we've got floats, we have bands. We're also going to be showing a Christmas carol at the Paramount as a matinee, free to the public that afternoon, and I believe we're going to have ice skating that night. So, in a culminate with Small Business Saturday and shop local throughout the rest of the holiday season and throughout the year. And also, our office has been working, our IDA, Polycraft Industries, you know, they received Planning Board approval, and they're in front of the IDA, there's a public hearing this Thursday at 4:00 here in the council chambers, and that's great manufacturing job, manufacturing project, and we look forward to moving forward with the IDA on that as well. And that's all I have for tonight.
Any questions for Maria? Thank you, Maria. DPW Commissioner?
Good evening, all. We'll be very brief tonight. The leaf pickup, second ward, was done last week, we have a couple of more days left. Today, we had to stop everything, obviously, because of the snow and possible ice for tonight, so we had to deassemble and reassemble our trucks so they are suitable for the plowing, not just leave disposal and transporting throughout the city. That is going so far, so good for tonight. The men are doing a good job for us, the first snow event. So again, reminder for the people to try to stay off the road, please, as much as you can. Don't park on the road to help our trucks maneuver, it's very tight already with the piles of leaves all over the place, so just help us out by just staying off the road if you can, so our guys can continue, and then we'll resume picking up leaves tomorrow morning. Traffic operations, we had a big meeting today with the engineers and the contractors, boys, and to push them to try to seal up all the remaining work that they have opened up at the intersections, Franklin Square, by the Central Firehouse, Ridge Street, Prospect Avenue intersection with the East Main, Grand Avenue, and all that stuff. So the contractor will be pushing through to finish up everything by the end of next week, hopefully, or just shortly after Thanksgiving. Reminder for the public and the contractors, we have three major, two major projects out for bid for upgrading the Shuangang dams, there are three of them in there, and there's one dam, a separate project at Kench Reservoir, and installing flow meters. So any contractors who are interested, please pick up the plans and call DPW, and we'll tell you how to get the plans. And the bid opening is going to be pushed back by two weeks for the Shuangang reservoir, so hopefully we'll have the Shuangang and Kench bid opening at the same time in December. With that, I will conclude my comments.
Any question for Jacob? Alderman Jean-François?
Evening, Commissioner. How are we doing on snow salt for us this year? Are we good to go?
Yeah, we're good. You know, at this time of the year, we have full, full storage facility, and then, you know, hopefully we're not going to get hit too much with the snow and ice, so we should be okay, hopefully, but we don't know until the end of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jacob likes to use salt.
To make roads safe, right? To make our roads safe for the public.
Even though it's going to be 46 degrees tomorrow. Alderman Kleiner?
Again, from our constituents' meeting, is there any better way for us to pick up leaves? Are we looking into anything besides the front loaders, you know? Feeling was that it's almost like, well, there has to be a better way to do it, but I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, we looked into ways, other ways of doing it in the past, and now we have a demo coming to us. Whenever it's assembled, they don't have demo trucks, which is basically like a big vac truck.
Okay.
And there's another, an attachment blower, we're trying to get a demo in here to make sure that they're working. We did visit other places and surrounding us a few years ago, and we were not impressed with operations, so there are vac trucks right now, and there are blowers in there that will shred the leaves and blow them in the trucks, and you have to have boxes for them, so we are exploring that. We continue to explore better method of doing it. One other method, which some people talk about, is asking everybody to bag their leaves in disposable bags, and then this way we don't have to have all this mess in our streets for two months out of the year. We just go pick up the bags and go. But it's, you know, that's one efficient way of doing it.
A lot of leaves.
I don't know how popular it is going to be.
A lot of bags.
Thank you, Jacob.
Yes, sir.
Fire chief?
Good evening, everybody. What's that?
Can you burn the leafs?
People are, why not? Hope everybody's doing well. For the past couple of months, we've been averaging 90 calls plus a month. Most of them are nuisance alarms, pretty much all of them are. But anyway, we've done a few community events these past, this past month, and Fireman Joe is still in the works, moving slowly, but it's getting there. Hopefully by the end of the year, it'll be taken off its pedestal, brought to a warehouse, and started to get work on. Just want to let you know, the fire department did put a float together this year for the Christmas parade. Seen is in trouble, but hopefully we can save him. That's all I have. Any questions?
Questions for the fire chief?
He's in trouble.
Thank you, chief. City treasurer?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I don't really have anything for tonight, I have some resolutions, if you have any questions about that, I can address it.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Police chief?
Good evening. Just a couple of quick reminders before our next meeting, the overnight parking goes into effect, that's going to be no parking on the city streets, effective December 1st, that goes all the way through March 15th, and that's from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. As we lead into that, we'll do some warnings, but then we'll be doing enforcement. There's a lot of reasons with that, one is being, as Jacob mentioned, the snow removal on the streets. We need to keep those streets clear during the winter to allow his staff to do that. Additionally, on the parking, there are ability for people that don't have driveways to apply for parking permits to park on the street, there's a process online, or through the clerk's office, so that is available. And then there's the overnight parking permits for the, ah, I'm sorry, I don't know what's going on, the municipal lots, and there are, there's a cost associated with that. But that's all can be done through the clerk's office. Other than that, just want to reiterate what Jacob said about driving safe and staying off the streets if you don't have to be out there, and I'd like to wish the members of the council and the community a safe and happy Thanksgiving.
Any questions for the police chief? Thank you, chief. Superintendent Recreation?
Good evening, everyone. Swan Report tomorrow, we have myself, the Assistant Superintendent Nicole Sarakis, and Program Quarter Contessa Beckford, we're all attending the annual youth summit through the Orange County Youth Bureau, we're bringing two youth with us, that's going to represent us and speak on our programs and influence that the programs have made in their lives and how they're benefiting from the programs that we offer. Tomorrow, our rink is being installed, so we're going to have our guys down there watching it. We're still waiting on a few more things to come in, the ice skate holder, the sharpener, and we do have half the skates, but the other half is on back order. The November 25th, the night of the tree lighting, is going to be the first night that the ice skating rink is open. We are going to limit the session times, giving most people an opportunity to get out there on the ice, so it's not going to be an hour, hour and a half skating session, we're going to probably rotate it every 15 minutes, just allow everyone to try, a chance to get on the ice, on ice that night. This Saturday, it's going to be cold, but the skateboarders are going to be out there at the skateboarding contest this Saturday. Mailboxes are out, if you haven't noticed, we are gladly taking any volunteers who would like to come see us, take some letters from the kids that we receive from the mailboxes, and write some letters back to the kids. We do have a script you can follow, just for a guide, but we do have thousands of letters that come in, so help is needed a lot. It's a great family event, if you take some and sit home with the adult members of your household and write some letters, it would be greatly appreciated. November 26th, at the Dog Park, we're doing our Santa Paws event. We very happy to do it up there this year, it's definitely improving and doing more stuff at the Dog Park. December 7th is going to be the Cops and Cookies event. December 11th is the Polar Express at the Paramount Theater. Our Holiday Light and Decoration Display Contest is starting to go out now, so any houses, if you live within the City of Middletown, please enter the contest. We have our bus booked, and we're going to go around and start looking at the houses mid-December. And lastly, we have our winter break program, registration is open for the winter break from December 6th to December 31st, and registration is open for that. Any questions?
I just had one, will there be a fee for the ice skating rink, and if so, how much?
The night of the tree lighting is going to be free. We are also in the process of hoping to secure funding from the Orange County Youth Bureau to offer free skating on Tuesdays and Thursday evenings for the youth, but the fee, we're going with what our pool prices are, so a dollar for children and $3 for adults. And we're also, there's going to be a $1 rental fee associated if you need the rental skates. We're also doing a session on Fridays, we're going to call it Family Fridays, from 5:30 to 7:00, and it's going to be $10, that includes your admission for up to five people, and the skate rental as well.
I'd like to see the mayor skate.
I actually was a very good skater in my youth, and I think I would challenge you if you were like.
I'm willing to cross check somebody. How thick is that ice?
Do we got cameras down there? Any other questions?
Thank you, Rayland.
You're welcome.
City clerk?
Nothing this evening.
Any question for Rick? All right. No public hearings, remarks of Alderman, Alderman Massey.
Oh, okay. Got a couple of things. One, Veterans Day just passed, and I want to thank everyone that reached out to me, I appreciate that. Elections are over, I want to thank everyone that went out to vote, no matter who you voted for, it's a right and an, I believe it's an obligation, and I'm hoping that next year it even picks up more, more people will go out and vote. It's Point Setta time again for the Kiwanis, anyone that's interested in Point Setta, just let me know. And then finally, this is probably something Jerry would do, but I'm not sure, you saw the news, Jerry, so I'm just going to say it. I happen to be watching the news, and we reached 8 billion people in the world today, and they reached the 7 billion mark 11 years ago, so in 11 years, we've increased the population by a billion people. That's all. And by the way, happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Alderman Witt?
Thank you very much, I have a couple of things too, I'll try to move quickly through them. We had our first ward meeting on November 9th, thank you to everyone who attended. We're going to pass on December, Alderman Massey and I both have commitments, and we're close to the holidays and a lot going on, so we're going to see everybody again in January, but please do not wait for just these opportunities to reach out to either one of us, if you have questions, we will be happy to try to help you with everything you need. I want to give a belated thank you to Maria and her team at the Paramount. We saw the ABBA and Queen shows, my wife and I, and they were tremendous. It was, it was a great night in the city, it was good to see, the place was pretty close to packed both nights, it appeared to be, and just a good night all around, the city looked great, we had dinner in town and had a drink in town, and it was just, people really should, I know, probably have been doing it for years, but really, take a look at the calendar and see what's going on there, because it was really a great theater, and to see these bands perform that close is pretty amazing. I was, it was really nice attending the Veterans Day celebration at the Post 151 in Middletown. Mayor spoke, and Alderman Massey and Alderman Kleiner were also there, and it was, it was nice because the speakers, the majority of the speakers, the mayor, Judge Brockett, and Councilman Coy from the Town of Walk Hill, did not serve but still spoke, and it was nice to see that perspective, that the appreciation that was shown from people in different walks of life, and how it affected them, and what it meant to have the people who served for us, so we have the freedoms that we had. One person who I was kind of taken by listening to her, who did serve, and her name is Tanya Nelson Waller, and she is the veterans advocate, and I actually spoke with her this afternoon, and she was fine with me telling people that here. What she does is, she educates veterans as to the benefits that they are entitled to, and also assists them in going through the process, because it can be very overwhelming. She was telling me a lot of different things that she did for them, and I pretty much told her that if I tried to repeat it, I would screw it up, so she offers her number, and she offered it that day as well, and her number is 845-313-3944. So she is a veterans advocate, and if a veteran's not listening here, maybe a family member is, she seemed really nice, and she was really eager to help everybody, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Green?
Yes, thank you. As well, thank you again to all of our veterans, you know, Veterans Day is often mistaken with Memorial Day and things like that, but again, it's all about those who served our country, and, you know, thank you to Alderman Massey, being our sole veteran on the council, that's always important to show our appreciation. Beautiful tree, that will be lit next week, I really can't wait to see it, the parade's always great, and it sounds like we have an amazing, you know, weekend set with Small Business Saturday, ice skating, and movies at the Paramount as usual, so it's going to be a great week for Middletown next week, and I want to wish everyone a very happy and healthy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. I also want to thank American Legion Post 151 for their Veterans Day event, it was very nice. We had a suggestion at our constituents' meeting about cleaning up the monuments in Thrall Park, and speaking of veterans and Memorial Day, and I have lots of D2, which is what you use to clean those, available for people if any of the service clubs or anyone wants to take that on, you would, it's not, the city does not own the monuments, so we would coordinate that, but it's available, it's something to think of for not going into winter, but for next spring, it would be a nice idea, so I'll pass that along. I also want to thank all the people involved in making Election Day go smoothly in Middletown, the early voting, I thank the volunteers, well, all the staff members, they are paid, but it is a long day, and we're not really happy with boys blocking off the entrance to the, during early voting a couple times, but I think that finally got straightened out. I want to congratulate Pat Ryan, our new congressman-elect, and James Scoofus, once the lawsuits are all settled, will be our new state senator-elect, and Aileen Gunther is going to return to the assembly for another term, so congratulations to them. Also had, from our constituents' meeting, asking people when they speak, and when they try and listen to meetings, I think it's not so much with council meetings, because we're all, at this point, pretty good at using the microphones, but other meetings, a lot of times with the planning board, sometimes with the police commission, sometimes with the zoning board, you can't tell who's speaking, and they don't turn the microphones on, and it is a public meeting, and it is your responsibility to use the microphone and be heard, so I put that out there, in fact, particularly for people in charge of those meetings, to please remind the people to use the microphones. I want to thank Alderman Massey also for, I had mentioned to him about the issue of dealing with the feral cat populations in Middletown, and he was able to put some money in the budget, so we'll be able to address that issue, and I'm going to skip anything else, and just wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and we will see you in December. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Katsou?
Good evening, sorry. So I just wanted to make sure that the third ward constituents know that our ward meeting, which would normally fall on the Tuesday right before Thanksgiving, will be canceled. The holidays sit right there, and it's just not humanly possible with the amount of cooking that I need to do, but that one, and then again, obviously, will lead us to that week between Christmas and New Year, so we again will reconvene in January, but no one ever hesitates to reach out to us, so I'm not worried. I hope everyone has a wonderful and happy Thanksgiving week, and that is all I have, I'm excited, I just hope it's not as cold at the tree lighting as it was this year, because that was brutal.
Alderman Johnson?
Thank you. Yeah, you know, electing, voting has become a much more appreciated activity in the last year or two than it used to be, so early voting is a beautiful thing, they manned it for several days, it took me exactly four minutes to vote, and I appreciate that opportunity. And for Thanksgiving, we're maybe moving past COVID, where people can all be together in the same place at the same time, so happy Thanksgiving, and I'm sure we'll all find something to be thankful for. Thank you.
Alderman Jean-François?
Yes, thank you, good evening. I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Maria, I know your teams always do a wonderful job with the tree lighting, so I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Tobin?
Yes, thank you, everybody, for everything you're doing, veterans, thank you, and the word you said, Kevin, thank you, and Maria for all the work. Also to piggyback off of what Alderman Kleiner says about hearing, I know, like you guys, I go to a ton of meetings, and it's a peeve of mine when someone says, especially teachers, we're the worst, "I got a teacher voice, I don't need the microphone." And if you have a hard of hearing, you got to use the microphone. People that have like hearing aids and are hard of hearing, they can't hear you, so please use the mic, don't use the teacher voice or whatever, if you can. I went to, I was invited by County Executive Steve Newhouse to go to where my other has a teacher, County Active Shooter Drill, and they got all the schools in the county together, Chief Huanchu was there, which I'm proud of, he was, you know, sitting right by the superintendent in Middletown, taking active part. Not all the police departments were there, and so I'm glad to see Middletown really being engaged in keeping our schools safe. And I'd like to thank the county executive for putting together, it's one of those things that you, you know, you hope you never have to do, but you want to be ready for, and it looks like Middletown is prepared, and I'd like to, you know, thank all the officers that do protect our schools for making us feel safe, so that was definitely commendable, and hope the county executive makes it a regular thing, and, you know, you can never be too prepared, so thank you, Chief Huanchu.
Thank you. New business.
Good evening, we have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, authorizing a $3,132.76 budget transfer for maintenance and winter supplies at the Parks Department.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, second by Alderman Witt. Any discussion? Roke?
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoun?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey? Massey.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green to accept a dormitory authority of the State of New York grant for $1 million.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt authorizing a $3,000 budget transfer for a new dimmer pack for lighting at the Paramount Theater.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman, Ram Cassoon, awarding bids for surplus vehicles.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman, Ram Cassoon, awarding bids for surplus vehicles.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois authorizing a $50,000 budget transfer for the Department of Public Works.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey authorizing an agreement with Marshall and Sterling for workers' compensation services for the 2023 year.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson authorizing a budget transfer to cover overdrafts.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson authorizing a tax lien sale.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.[1578.91]